Are to increase capacity to fifteen beds. The location and zoning, the address six forty-five Liberty Street, zoning RA dash one residential apartment district. Surrounding zoning RA dash one, city RA dash one, and county R one. Surrounding land uses multifamily and single-family residential. Proposed modifications, convert existing garage into two additional bedrooms and bathrooms. Expand office space within the facility, maintain existing emergency exit. And update parking layout to provide eight conforming spaces. And you can see right up top here, or let's see here. Right here, this would be where the addition would be inside here. Valuation criteria, site suitability, adequate space, no environmental constraints, the appropriate design, parking, lighting. Traffic circulation remain compliant, no external additions. Public services served by the City of Kalispell Utilities and Emergency Services. Neighborhood impact, minimal changes, twenty-four seven operation remains unhinged. The staff recommendation, staff recommends approval, a CUP request, CU dash twenty-five dash O one. It must comply with all the zoning, building, and fire safety codes. Activity must begin within eighteen months of approval. And that is all for that. Any questions?
Any questions, staff? I'm gonna open up this item for public comment. Okay, close public comment, look to the commission for a motion.
Oh, move that the Kalispell City Planning Commission adopt staff report. Number KCU dash twenty-five dash O one, findings of fact and recommend to the city council. Kalispell City Council that the conditional use permit be approved, subject to the published conditions.
Any discussion on this? Okay, roll call.
Joshua Borgart.
Aye.
Doug Kaufman.
Yes.
Shelby Leffler. Rory Young.
Aye.
Chad Graham.
Motion carries, I'm gonna go ahead and close tonight's public hearing and move into old business.
Okay, as far as old business, uh, last month we did Vista Ridge cottages, uh, which was the, uh, ninety-three units off of Two Mile. Uh, that went to city council on the third and, um, all of the items were approved on an eight to one vote. With second reading coming up on the seventeenth for the PUD and initial zoning.
Uh, new business.
So next month, there's, um, either one or two items, uh, we've got an application in for, um. Uh, annexation and conditional use permit for a Department of Transportation facility, uh, right at the north. East corner of the intersection of Highway ninety-three and Ro- uh, Rose Crossing, uh, so we'll be looking at that. Uh, second potential item, uh, depending upon, uh, how the work session goes later would be the reserve at Johnson Ranch, which was ninety acres. Um, just to the northwest of Glacier High School, and that'd be the subject of our work session tonight.
Okay, is there anything from the commission? Okay, yeah, uh, before adjourn, uh, we will be moving into, uh, tonight's, uh, uh, work session, which as mentioned will be the, uh. Uh, rese- uh, reserve at Johnson Ranch, uh, so with that, I'm gonna go ahead and adjourn.
Okay, so, um, you guys looked at this last month, um, and we turned it back to the applicant. Uh, in order to update, uh, and add some additional information to the application, so that's what we're looking at at here tonight. Um, just to kind of recap, um, Spartan Holdings Whispering Trails, uh, submitted applications for the reserve at Johnson Ranch. Uh, which would include requests for annexation, a growth policy amendment to create a neighborhood business and high-density residential node. At the northwest corner of the intersection of Old Reserve Drive and Stillwater Road, uh, along with amending a portion. North side of Stillwater Road from suburban residential to urban residential. Uh, there is also, uh, request for initial zoning of R three, uh, RA one and B one on the property. Uh, along with the planned unit development and also preliminary plat approval for a hundred and eighty-six single-family residential lots. Uh, two multifamily lots, one of which would have two hundred and thirty-seven units and one with seventy units, as well as one commercial lot. Uh, and overall, the property would be approximately ninety-two acres. Uh, it's located again at the northwest corner of Old Reserve Drive and Stillwater Road, includes property located at ten fifty-three Stillwater Road. Uh, with the area you can see, it's just to the west of Westview Estates, uh, Glacier High School would be in this location. You can see city utilities, uh, come up to the southeast corner as lo- well as along the, uh, eastern portion of the property. Um, shot of the property, um. Current zoning, uh, is Ag eighty and SUG five in the county. And growth policy map currently shows high-density residential, uh, in the southern portion. And then you can see the urban residential and then suburban residential currently in that acreage that's on the north side of Stillwater. Uh, again, two hundred and thirty-seven single-family, uh, in this area, uh, with seventy going into that area. And the B one in that area. Um, the B one would include, uh, forty thousand square foot neighborhood grocery store, uh, with a total of a hundred and ten thousand square feet of, of. Commercial, uh, that would be more neighborhood scale. Uh, the growth policy, uh, amendment and zoning district would follow these boundaries, uh, with B one. Uh, with the neighborhood commercial designation through this blue, uh, you'd have high-density residential. And with a RA one designation in this area. This area here would also be RA one, uh, but would be included within the urban residential designation that you can see in the pink. Uh, and the greens right there. Uh, this is one of the updates that they did submit, uh, kind of showing a little bit more of the, uh, layout that you would see on the property. Um, again, down in this area through here, this is where the, uh, neighborhood grocery store would go. You'd have additional, um, commercial through this stretch, uh, with some potential pads off in those areas and parking, uh, in that stretch. Uh, getting into the multifamily, you can kind of see the layout that you'd have here, uh, there'd be a connection and not a road per se, but, uh. I guess would function as a roadway, uh, coming out to Stillwater through the center of that property, but you can kind of see the. Site plan and the layouts that they would have with the, uh, residential buildings through there. And then again, on the northern area where you've got the seventy units, uh, it'd be the same area with three, potentially three buildings with the parking along the outside. Um, this again is the plat, uh, with a few updates on that, uh, as we noted last time, uh, Public Works wouldn't be supportive of the mid-block crossing. So, uh, that would probably need to change from this area, uh, off into the east. That would make that connection. Um, this was submitted the last time and there was some more detail that they did provide, but the red shows where there's some of the slopes on the property. Um, coming down through here, where there'd be some grading that would go on, uh, where there'd be some homes, um, constructed in the southwest corner. In this area, you're primarily looking at, uh, storm drainage and some, uh, park area that would be, uh, developed. Uh, this was one of the updates that was submitted, um, for the most part, you'd be less than twenty-five percent. It did look like there may be some areas right through here, uh, that may be in excess of that, uh, so they would just need to show how they would be mitigating that. As part of the overall grading plan. Uh, this is the, uh, phasing plan, there's, uh, uh, several phases that would be coming through. Um, they'd be starting up in this northeast corner in this area. Um, and we're looking at doing development of the frontage improvements, along with the frontage improvements of that particular phase. That would be, uh, under development. Um, right now, they're showing this as phase two, actually probably needs to be part of phase one. Uh, because it would incorporate storm drainage and parkland that would be serving, uh, phase one. Um, but a lot of what they were looking at here is wanting to defer some of those improvements coming down this frontage. Uh, with phase two rather than phase one, um, a lot of that flows from the general rule that we have. That says that you need to improve the full frontage, the full length of the frontage of anything your final plating. But in this particular situation, there's an existing house that was gonna stay at least for the immediate future there. Um, with this being, uh, storm water detention area and the parkland. Didn't have any parcels really being developed off of that, um, so part of what we were looking at doing was deferring some of those to. Uh, a phase two development. As we look at some of the other, uh, frontages, this would be de- uh, developed in conjunction with, uh, B one neighborhood business. Um, it's kind of an open question about whether we'd really be able to split this into two separate, um, projects, but we'll continue to work with this. Um, developer on that, um, this phase was gonna be looking at doing the development in conjunction, uh, with that last phase there. Uh, one of the other issues that we'd still need to work out would be, there'd be some questions, you can see where this area is notched out. That's part of the development, but that's a well site for an adjoining county subdivision, uh, but nailing down. Um, how that may affect the, um, park and storm development. As well as potential water rights on the property. Um, this is showing that park layout, uh, again, there's a walking path that would be coming through the center of that. With this needing, again, to be relocated over, so there's not a mid-block crossing, with the main park area being, uh, to the north of Stillwater. Uh, this is the impact summary and recommendations on the TIS, um, it showed a, a minimal amount of mitigation that needed to be done. Uh, there were some updates to the TIS, uh, that would need to be, uh, addressed, primarily because the TIS didn't include the area to the north of Stillwater. Uh, there was also some other, um, provisions in the TIS. That, uh, Public Works will want to have, um, uh, amended and updated. Uh, it's unlikely, um, in our opinion, that that's going to change the recommendations, um, but, um. It would be an update that they would need to do before they, uh, moved on to a public hearing. Um, again, this is just the layout that we're seeing with the, the overall property. Um, I think one of the main things that we were looking at as far as having the second work session, uh, was. That the initial layout didn't really show, um, you know, conceptually how that was gonna have an elevated design. In order to support what they're asking for with the, um, growth policy amendment and the PUD. Uh, to allow particularly the commercial area that would be in there, um, which is a little bit larger than you would typically see. Um, and the forty thousand square feet being quite a bit larger than what you would normally see in the B one, which is typically limited to four thousand square foot. Um, retail only in that type of situation. You know, here, um, having that neighborhood commercial with the neighborhood grocery, uh, we do see as something that's beneficial to the, to the neighborhood. And something that we're trying to develop, um, at a lot of these neighborhood nodes, um, but again, as part of the PUD and the growth policy amendment. You'd wanna see somewhat of an elevated design. Um, some of the goals out of the growth policy, um, that should be addressed as part of the application. And this would be something for the commission to see if, um, you feel that this meets those requirements. Um, one is that, um, it should complement the community values of creating walkable, bikeable neighborhoods. Uh, it should be designed that integrates that development into the surrounding neighborhood, and it should de-emphasize large parking lots adjacent to streets or highways. Um, commercial and residential development should be designed to take advantage of enhanced adjacent streets, parks, and natural features. And then a variety of housing types and compatible land uses, um, should be encouraged in these residential areas. Um, but should fit the scale and character of the neighborhood, and particularly should be utilizing the PUD process. Uh, to make sure it's innovative and creative while maintaining the, uh, integrity and values of the community. Uh, one of the other aspects is when you're looking at neighborhood commercial areas, um, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Um, so, go back. One there, so for D, the de-emphasizing of the large parking lots, I guess my question is just. Um, when you have the, um, the commercial part of this. Would that, that parking lot there, you would qualify and say that that's de-emphasized from the road? Because of the landscape and all that and the trees and all that?
Yeah, you can certainly see that, I mean, it's, it's, it doesn't require, you know, first of all, the growth policy isn't a regulation in and of itself. So it, it guides some of the decisions. Secondly, um, it wouldn't require that parking always be behind something, but what you're looking for is for the site to be. Designed in a way that, um, it minimizes that front feature, so it can be landscape buffering, it can be, um. Having out parcels up front there, uh, that might then have parking between them, so even if you're trying to get the neighborhood grocery behind it. Um, there's other ways of doing that, so it's a little qualitative, uh, rather than quantitative when you're looking at that. But that's what that provision is really shooting for.
Okay.
The increased landscaping would certainly be part of it, just trying to break the parking lot up, like PJ said, whether it's throughout lots or. Kind of shifting the buildings around, the reality is just trying to, it's just not one big box and one big parking lot, so I guess. That's kind of one of the things to look at is like, are we happy with where it's at, or we feel like there could be a bit more? But I think PJ's got a couple other things here too.
Well, I think it, 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 to that point, is this de-emphasizing the parking lot, it doesn't necessarily depend on. What is de-emphasizing it, but it's like the landscaping would go through and be pulling and detracting away from, which would be a good thing. From the parking lot aspect of it, so.
So, I, quick question, the, the parking lot itself, it, it seems like it's very encompassing in regards to the build itself. Uh, I guess my question, just from an observation perspective, is when we look at something that's this size, the nearest actual place to go buy groceries. Is probably what, Albertson's from here?
Well, could be Walmart.
Walmart, right, ah, okay. Costco, just a small little shop in terms of like groceries, is the intention to sell groceries in general, or is it just to. Provide for snacks, those kinds of things?
Well, it's gonna be smaller than what you would see with some of those other types of stores, so it's gonna be oriented more towards the neighborhood. You know, when you're talking four thousand square feet, which is what our standard is in the B one, I mean, you're really talking about, you know, like a small convenience store or something like that. You know, or growth policy is in general, in general calls out a lot of these, um, business nodes, uh, neighborhood business nodes. At some of these main intersections and part of that so that people don't have to drive and cross through the highway to get to, to Walmart. Because that congests traffic on a larger scale, right, uh, throughout the community, and so having it so where people can, can walk. Or have much shorter drives to that type of, of, um, facility and service is an important aspect to the growth policy too. So then, you know, jumping to one of the last things off the growth policy was when you're establishing these neighborhood commercial areas. Um, you know, one of the policies is to, as I mentioned, um, have these neighborhood nodes that are designed to provide. Easier access for more day-to-day type of, of shopping rather than regional type of shopping. Um, generally should be three to five acres in size, this is quite a bit larger, um, but, um. That's where the design element is important, making sure it's integrated into the neighborhood, um, and has an enhanced design along with it. Um, certainly within the general scope of what you would see here. Um, but it should be configured to enable, uh, clustering of those neighborhood businesses, emphasizing the bike and pedestrian access. Which again, having that in north-south access through the middle of the development, um, is, is doing that. Uh, and the last step in here is making sure that it's architecturally designed, landscaped, and buffered to fit within the surrounding neighborhood. So, um, you know, putting this back up on the screen and seeing some of those goals and policies. Um, out of the growth policy, I think one of the main questions, uh, for the planning commission is. Do you have enough here in order to make that determination, or there suggestions that you would see in terms of the design? Do you think landscaping is sufficient for that buffering as they've laid it out, or would you wanna see, um, some other design elements? Um, did you want to see, uh, renderings of the properties, for example, uh, in order to say that it architecturally fits within, uh, the rest of the area? So, I, I would turn that over to you guys for discussion on that.
I guess in that regard, you've got the landscaping, so you kind of have landscape buffers around it, you know. A use like this is gonna have parking requirements that need to be met, the worst thing you could do is underpark something, then it's not gonna work. But if you're gonna have a parking lot, how do you soften it, whether it's through landscaping? It is integrated into the development to a certain extent, but as far as the actual appearance of the building. You can also soften it by, like, breaking up the facade, you know, like the blue portion of the building, that's not intended to be like. One big retail space, that'll probably be a number of like four thousand square foot spaces, right? So, you know, the facades can be more residential scale, um, the, even the grocery store can be a residential scale. We're not looking at the regional scale Walmart, Costco, it's a residential scale. Um, obviously, it's larger, but it should fit into a residential neighborhood, right? It's not this big commercial, you know, beast. What's that?
Kind of like a market.
Yep, yeah, and then everything around it should fit and integrate into each other, so I guess. I know that that's their goal, but do you wanna see what it's gonna look like or general the theme that they're gonna have? Is that something that you think is important in this development, or is the site plan enough like they're showing?
Well, I think what I, going back to talking about the parking lot and everything, what, what I go through and envision with what I'm seeing with the landscape buffer there. Um, is probably kind of similar to what you would see if you were going up Whitefish Stage. In front of, uh, Glacier Commons, um, even, you know, all, all along Glacier, uh, Whitefish Stage, really. Um, to Edgerton, there's a big landscape buffer there that goes and creates that distance between. Whitefish Stage and the residential uses there. So, I mean, if, if, if we're going through and talking about, you know, obviously, these trees aren't, I mean, this isn't scientific here. And this isn't like detailed out to how they're gonna go and place the trees or what the trees are, but. Trees or shrubs or bushes or whatever, or a combination of all of them. Um, but that's what I would be going through and looking for, it's just something to go and de-emphasize. The parking lot and the structure of the, of the, the grocery store, whatever. Um, and even really even along, um, the, what, so what is that, Stillwater? Even along there, you know, there's that landscape buffer there too, to just create that break, that's, that's what I'm looking for, I don't know that I need to see.
Yeah, I mean, I did a lot of commercial, they tend to wanna be in your face, this is not supposed to be in your face. It's supposed to be integrated, the landscaping can shield it, another good example is up Highway ninety-three there by the hospital where like, uh, is it Kadoba? Like that landscape buffer that's there with the trees, you know, we oftentimes now that the trees are. They're serving their purpose, they're finally mature, and it's actually hard to know there's even commercial back there, that was actually the point. So now, you know, we do get a lot of pushback from some of the commercial wanting to be more seen, I was like, well, that was part of the plan. You know, you're actually not supposed to necessarily be seen, right, from the highway, and it's kind of, kind of similar, so that, that does get into the design. And certainly some of the, the aspects that the planning commission can look at when they're looking at the site.
Are the buildings themselves gonna have that like box-like sort of commercial look? Or are they gonna look a little more like neighborhood-y, I guess?
Well, that's part of what we don't have, we don't have any renderings to show what it would look like.
I don't think that a box-looking store would look more neighborhood-friendly, it would look a little too, too commercially. So, definitely changing the structural type of what kind of building will go in there would make it look nicer, I guess. That's what I think.
Well, I applaud the applicant on putting together, uh, a flat two-D green, blue, and red diagram. I, uh, I for one would definitely like to see a little more development of the facades, what kind of structures we could possibly. Uh, expect to see there. I mean, I look at this and the blue strip mall and the big red box, uh. I'm not saying that's what it's gonna be, I'm just saying that's what it kind of looks like to me right now. So that's why I would, I would prefer to see a little more development of the facade of the actual structure.
At, at another work session, or?
Uh, well, uh, obviously, we don't have it tonight.
Yeah, well, I wasn't sure if it was gonna move forward and just.
Yeah, well, there's a couple of different ways, if, if there is some additional information that you'd wanna see, and it sounds like at least developing the landscaping plan a little bit more. And, and better renderings as to what those are gonna look like, um, as I mentioned, just probably some sprucing up on the TIS and a couple of the little things. Um, if you felt like you needed another work session, we could do that, if you felt like, because the, the main purpose of doing these work sessions. Just to give some of that direction to the applicant anyway before you move to it, to a public hearing. So, it'd be perfectly fine just to say, hey, these are the sort of things that we wanna see, have the developer, you know, work with staff a little bit more on that. To develop it and then bring it forward to a public hearing, so it's up to you, if you feel like you need another work session to see those, but, but it wouldn't be required at all on our end.
I don't specifically think that we need to, uh, push the applicant back and go through another work session. It's just that I'd like to see those things addressed when they come in with, for the public meeting.
Okay.
That's my personal opinion.
I would agree with that, um. I wanna, like, one, one of the things I don't really wanna get into with is, you're getting the overall appetite for what we're looking, you know, trying to look for and everything. For that, but, um, you know, if they are able to bring something that kind of gets that, but I don't wanna get down into the, into the weeds of actually designing this. For the applicant either, that's not what our job is.
What we could do off that is, you know, work with the applicant, and based off of that, we can come up with some general conditions that kind of condition that type of design. Cause yeah, it, it could go unless planning commission wanted, they could go with a number of themes that kind of get to the same point. Whether it's breaking up the facades, having a residential scale, and they could use a number of different themes that maybe they would like to go with. But, um, we can work with them on that and then come up with some, some conditions that would, I think, put enough sideboards on it. That the planning commission would likely be comfortable with it, so.
Uh, I for one would be, uh, in approve, I would be, be a, look approval on that.
So is there anything else that, um, the commission wanted to see in terms of additional information or fleshing anything out that you'd wanna see as part of that packet when it came forward?
What is that building or pool-looking thing at the top right near the roundabout? It looks like a pool, it's not, but.
Right there?
It could be a pool.
The giant jacuzzi.
Maybe it's a big water feature, no, it, it, I don't know if they have anything spelled out specifically for what it would be, but it would be basically now parcel type of a thing. I don't think they're looking at subdividing that off, but it would be, um, some type of a commercial building there.
Okay, maybe a three-D model might help next time instead of the two-D, just kidding.
I think I'm good with it, I mean, for. Yeah, I, I move it forward with, uh, you know, bringing the more, more information forward at a public hearing.
Okay, so, so we'll work with the applicant on that and see what we can pull together and, and potentially even get it on that, um, and. Next meeting date on, on the eighth, but we'll see what we can pull together on that.
Okay.
Ready to move to the next one?
Yep.
All right, good evening again, so we're gonna talk about the understanding existing conditions of the Malupa. Our Senate Bill three eighty-two, um, and then introduction to initial work and research. Why analyze existing conditions? We need to establish a baseline for planning and decision-making, identify our strengths, challenges, and growth opportunities. Help us align the Malupa strategies with Kalispell's long-term goals, ensure data-driven, informed policy recommendations. Key focus areas, our infant structure, expanding our, of our roads, utilities, broadband. And public services to support a rapidly growing population. Our housing, addressing current availability, affordability, the future demand as the population is projected to grow from thirty-one thousand. To fifty thousand three hundred and eighty-seven by twenty forty-five. Economy, strengthening the business, climate, job market, and the investment opportunities to accommodate workforce expansion. and the investment opportunities to accommodate workforce expansion and economic migration. Our environment, implementing sustainable initiatives, responsible land use planning and hazard migration strategies to balance growth and resource conversation. Population projections. With a two point five percent annual growth rate, proactive urban planning and infrastructure investments will be essential to maintaining quality of life and economic stability. How is the data collected? Reviewing city planning documents and zoning regulations, conducting site visits and infrastructure assessments, analyzing census data, economic reports and housing studies, and engaging with stakeholders, businesses and community members. What comes next? Well, we're gonna finalize detailed reports on existing conditions, presenting findings to stakeholders and gathering feedback, identifying strategic priorities aligned with the Malupa goals and developing policy recommendations for sustainable growth. Moving forward together. Existing conditions, analysis and foundation for Malupa implementation. Stakeholder input is critical for refining policy directions and working together to develop smart, sustainable policies. And then by doing that, we introduce Melissa and Ben from the from Logan and Simpson. And they will take the lead on on what our next steps will be in this.
Is it on now? Okay, it was on to begin with. Hi, my name is Melissa Ruth. Um, I am the project manager for the Logan Simpson team. We were contracted by the city to support, um, the land use plan update process um, as a public engagement lead. I am joined by Ben Osterling, my colleague back there in the corner. Um, and then we have a number of other team members who are supporting on this project. Most notably, um, Megan Moore. I don't know if she's online or not. Probably not. Um, what we were brought on to do is really, um, three kind of core things. Be the public engagement lead, so facilitate in-person and digital outreach, which is why we're out here this week. Um, and synthesize results from that outreach into kind of key themes and actionable strategies. So not just telling you what we heard from the public, but how does that what we heard kind of drive policy decisions? Um, everyone on our team is either a planner or some kind of in the field of planning. So we do a lot of this work, um, across the West and are based kind of in a Western kind of planning mentality. Um, we're also here to support graphics as needed. So developing kind of key engagement graphics, process graphics, things like that to support the, um, the city staff through this process. And then last but not least, plan adoption support. So as the staff is going through drafting this plan, updating the plan, um, assisting staff as needed through any materials, graphics, um, public outreach, uh, presentations, stuff like that.
Melissa, can I jump in for one second?
Go ahead.
Just so the planning commission's aware, I saw some faces. Um, so the city was awarded through the state an MCR grant. The state helped. So we chose to use that MCR grant that was given to us from the state to use, hire somebody to help us. As we know, with the land use plan, it's supposed to be very front-loaded on the the planning and the public process. So we're like, we thought it'd be good to have somebody on board that could help us with that planning process and get the work out, get the word out. And they're here to help us with that. So obviously as far as writing the document and all that, that's us. But they're the one that are helping us get out into the public and get the word out that these updates are happening. Sorry.
No, you're good. That's a good clarification. So staff is still drafting the plan. We are here to support staff through the public engagement kind of effort and amplify a lot of their efforts that they've kind of been working on. So, um, as Donnie mentioned, they've been doing, um, stakeholder outreach. So they're working on that and we're working on kind of how do we broaden that view um, and get the word out to the general public, give them the opportunity to provide feedback and make this process approachable to them, um, since planning is isn't always approachable to the general public. Um, we're doing that through a number of strategies. One of the strategies and kind of the most basic is questionnaires. Um, there is a questionnaire that's out right now. It's that land use plan survey that, um, staff developed last summer. Uh, that is still open. Um, we are taking responses through that. We've kind of pulled it into an online platform. Um, and that's what will be kind of driving people to for the next couple of weeks. Um, we do anticipate possibly a second survey looking at, um, digging down deeper into some of those results from the first one. And if there's any additional questions we wanna ask the public. Um, we have a Tag the Map feature open. It is an interactive web map that allows people to, um, click and drop a pin within the city of Kalispell. We've got the city boundary up for people. Um, and they can identify what they love, what they would wanna see change, where there are some opportunities for people. I don't know what I've done wrong. I won't touch it. Um, people can also leave additional comments. They can upload photos, all the things like that. Um, so it allows people to kind of plug in as they want, um, and in more of an interactive, uh, opportunity. We are out here right now for pop-up events and open houses. We'll be back again in June to do a second round, um, in key locations throughout the city. So we've got six scheduled borough. Community interviews have already been mentioned. So these are targeted conversations with key community groups, city departments, service providers, things like that to make sure that goals and policies, um, and existing conditions are aligned. And last but not least is an online review platform. So once the document's ready for public review and been fully drafted, it'll go up online with an interactive platform for people to be able to kind of click on different sections, get an executive summary, um, ask it questions and then an interactive map as well for people to kind of plug into. Timeline, um, we are looking at four distinct phases. So but they all kind of blend together and we cross across them. So we're in kind of between phases one and two, blending into phase three right now. Um, phase one is foundation. So it's the the questionnaire that is live on the website, um, includes these monthly work sessions that staff has been doing, um, and then the one-on-one community group interviews. Where we really plug in as a firm is into, um, phases two and three. It's the Tag the Map, the workshops that we have now, drop-in meetings, um, that second questionnaire, and then the continued monthly work sessions. So we're we're kind of listening to them again, supporting staff as needed, but you won't really see us on these planning commission meetings unless there are specific outreach questions. So we'll we'll provide a summary to staff, um, and answer questions as needed. But, um, mostly where you'll see us is in this phase three. So really the innovation creation, looking to the public to say, what do you wanna see in your community? Um, what would you change? What do you wanna see different? What sort of strategies, um, are appropriate for for the city versus, um, which ones are maybe not quite as appropriate? And then last but not least is the plan adoption. So it's it's adopting the document. Um, and again, we're we're here to support staff through that process. But again, you probably won't see quite as much of us through that, um, but as as needed.
Is there an emphasis through this process of how, oops, of how important this front-loading is on three eighty-two? Because of the it's a five year and it it has to be redone every five years. So and I don't know if some of that changes because of the ruling that came down about spite site specific participation. But I'm getting the the sense here that because of of what I'm seeing here, it's all front-loaded. Like was said, it's all front-loaded. But it's extremely important for people to know how, why it's front-loaded. Because that's the time for people to go through and have their say. So I I guess that's that's where I'm starting to to jump on here and realize that that's where this is going is is the outreach. But I think it needs to put out there how important it is for that outreach and why people need to pay attention to this.
Yeah, absolutely. So we do have a project website, um, that has a, um, the questionnaire and the Tag the Map activity are up at the top and the project website is engagekalispell.com. So you can go check it out. Um, if you haven't already, um, those two engagement opportunities are at the top. And then there's a kind of about this project section that talks about why the the land use plan is being updated, references three eighty-two and the the purpose of front-loading, the public engagement process. We've also got an FAQ page, um, that looks kind of similar to to Whitefish. If you looked if you've looked at like Whitefish's, um, public outreach page, kind of the same sort of general platform that's got an FAQ on the side and highlights again that the importance of this process is that the the city is on the side of the community. We wanna hear from you. We wanna help, um, kind of create the best community vision for the future, um, for the city. Um, and then we do have an FAQ page that we'll be kind of handing out at our, uh, events that we'll be at that explains a little bit more of that. So we're kind of saying it in a couple of different places. And it's and staff has been, um, very clear on all the website and all the materials that we've seen so far that say this is kind of the intent of the process and we really want the public to to plug in now and here's why. Does that help?
Yeah, it helps. I've, yeah. It it's not that I was, I I wasn't trying to seek clarification for anything. I just, I see where this is gonna go three years in the future. I just know exactly where it's gonna go. Nobody pays attention. Nobody pays attention. And then three years from now, when something goes to and happens and and an excavator starts digging out in the the side of their property for for a development, they're gonna wonder, you know, why they weren't notified and why they didn't get to have public comment. That's kinda why I'm pushing on it so hard is why this is so important. And also probably I might like to see something on there that goes to and says that this isn't the city of Kalispell's idea either to go through and and front-load all of this. If I had my way, everything would be site-specific the way it is now. So this this stuff kinda makes me kinda hot when I go and see this because I didn't didn't agree with it to begin with. And I'm kind of on my soapbox now. But, um, I just can't stress enough that as much as you're gonna try to do this in three years, it it'll be a problem.
Oh, I wanna elevate this a little bit. Do other cities have the opportunities to get the monies that we got to do things like this?
Yes. If different communities opt to do different things. Columbia Falls, for example, you just there's, uh, to help fund the the housing study portion of that.
And and if you don't mind me asking, how much was this?
The grant was for thirty thousand.
Okay, so this costs thirty grand?
Well, into the what they're gonna be doing.
It's just a lot of money for changing stuff. And I just wanted to make a point 'cause I was on his soapbox and, you know.
So, yeah.
I'll lift his right hand.
It's a lot of work. And to Chad's point, that's why we've got them on board. Because staff alone may not be able to use our normal channels to get the word out and the outreach we need. So that's why we've chosen it. Knowing that it is front-loaded and knowing that public participation is so critical, why not hire some people to help us do it that are better than us at it? Creating websites, getting everything we need, getting out into the public. And we'll be able to utilize this throughout the process. Not only this process, but when we do do updates. And I feel like you're not gonna really see the changes until it is gonna take a while to educate the public, which is part of what we're doing now. But it's probably gonna take two or three rounds of this before the public truly gets how the paradigm has shifted.
So we can use Craigslist.
Yes. And I wanted to kinda add on to that a little bit too. Is that a lot of the other communities have hired out the entire process and the drafting of the plan, um, where we're doing that in-house, but trying to get, um, some assistance coming in like they're doing in order to do some of the public outreach component to that that was a little bit beyond what we could do just with our existing staff.
So I didn't mean to hijack your presentation here. I just wanted to jump in there. So go go ahead and continue.
No, and it's it's a good point. Um, public engagement and public education kind of go hand in hand. And as as we've done, um, similar work across the state, including in, um, and across the West, public engagement is a huge part of what we do. Um, and with that, the educational component of just talking to people about kind of what's out there, what exists, what the process is, um, and doing that in an approachable way that's not just, um, my neighbor is digging and I wanna know what's happening. But you know, what if I wanna know what's happening? How do I how do I get updates? Is there a listserv? Um, who do I talk to when I have questions, things like that? Um, sometimes people just don't don't know that or they aren't aware. And so that's a huge part of this process too, is just just letting people know what their resources are. Um, and then what that timeframe is. So again, the plan has to be updated every five years. So, hey, you're you're gonna have another opportunity to come back and and tell us if we got it right or if we need to make some changes in five years. So kind of putting people, um, on notice that that there is a way for them to plug in and provide feedback, um, in a way that that the city is is listening and and can actually, um, kind of respond to. And I think I only have one more slide. Um, and these are the events that we'll be doing over the next two days. So we've got, um, drop-in sessions tomorrow morning at Sykes Market, um, from seven thirty to nine. So we'll be having kind of coffee conversations with folks, giving them the opportunity to come talk with both us and staff about where they're at in the process, what questions they have, and then plugging into some of those key strategies that the that the city is kind of required to take a look at, um, under Malupa. We'll also be doing the same sort of thing at the Flathead County Library in the lobby tomorrow from eleven thirty to one thirty. And then we'll have an open house at Bias tomorrow evening from five to seven thirty. Thursday, uh, another coffee trade or another kind of coffee drop-in session at Coffee Trader's same time, seven thirty to nine. Drop-in sessions at the Community College in the cafeteria from eleven thirty to one thirty. And then another open house from five thirty to seven at the Depot Building. So trying to plug into a couple of different spaces, um, while we're out here and then also all of the online activities. So we've got a subscriber list that we push newsletters out to. So they've all been informed of this and then we've been using or working with the city to get it pushed out on Facebook, Instagram and the News Alert on the city page. So, um, this is kind of the first public outreach, letting everybody know that the process is going and here's how to plug in. Um, and then we'll provide periodic updates for folks to be able to, um, kind of see where we're at in the process, um, and what opportunities there are for them to plug in, um, as city staff update the plan.
Have you been doing drop-in sessions prior to these ones?
City staff has been doing the, um, interviews with key stakeholders. But this is our first big kind of drop-in session now that staff has really kind of had a chance to dive into what are the, really what is this kind of process look like so that we can tell the public? Here's what to expect and here's kind of what's gonna change and what might not change. Here's where the focus is gonna be.
Okay.
Anything to add?
I think it was mentioned the the website. It is live now, so we're actually gonna bring that up here. Cause we're kinda, we have been doing the work sessions here at Planning Commission the last couple of months. Um, so we've kind of been working through the process. But as far as really getting out of the public, we've done a lot of stakeholder meetings. But, um, I guess it's good for the viewing audience to see kind of what's been created. And it is a document that in of itself facilitates a planning process. Like you said, whether it's, um, getting alerts, upcoming meetings, the the tags and all that. So, um, take a look at it in your spare time. But this website is also up and going. Hopefully, like I said, this is a an easy way for the public to get involved. It'll not only be on the city web webpage, but it's just a really easy way if we can get it out to the public for them to to follow the process and provide.
So the website, um, while we're on here, the website has the homepage, which again has all of kind of the basic information, the the, um, questionnaire opportunities, um, a big banner at the top there to sign up for project updates as well as all of the activities and upcoming events along that sidebar as you scroll down. And then that information of kind of what what is this? What are we doing? What's the intent of it is all on that main page. Um, there is also the, so there's that get involved about kind of what the intent of the process is. Um, and then if you scroll back up to the top, there's a meeting and events page which has, um, all of the previous, um, or upcoming and previous events. So you'll see there's our planning commission meeting currently, the drop-in sessions for this week, um, and then the past events are the previous planning commissions. So all of those are linked back to the city page. Um, so if people have questions about what was discussed or any meeting, um, wanna see the meeting minutes, those are all there, kind of in one easy place for people to see, um, where they're at. There's the get involved, which has the same sort of links back to the live questionnaire and the Tag the Map. Um, so again, just making them, putting them in a couple of different places for people to be able to see. They're also shareable, so people can, um, take the questionnaire and then share it directly to their friends, which is a a cool feature. And last. And last but not least is the resources page, which has all of the information about, um, the current planning documents. So what are all those core policy documents and the related documents? Nothing groundbreaking. Um, it's all on the city web pa- website, but, um, kind of putting it in, in a couple of different places for people to be able to see. And then that map is the, um, city map, um, the Interactive Development Services web map. So all of that kind of in one place for people to be able to look at. Um, and as we get further into the engagement, um, and have some results for the questionnaire, we'll put those up. Um, and some kind of quick and easy-to-adjust snapshots and graphics for people to kind of understand what the direction is so far and respond to that as well.
So scroll to the top. Yeah, so underneath all of that, it may look kind of gaudy, but this paragraph should be copied out and put right underneath that. The par- the, the paragraph on number two on, on our thing. Cause it goes through and says exactly. Yeah, okay, so you got it bolded. You got, you got it bold and everything. Did, did you have to click then go somewhere else to that or did, was it just not scrolled down enough?
I think it needs to be on top, the first thing people see.
Could, could we have a pop-up? It literally stated straight up, this is not the best thing for the people of Montana.
So we can put it, we can move it higher up. Um, the only reason it's slightly further down is so that those engagement opportunities are right at the top if they, if they get a little further down. Um, and when we, after these events, we'll pull this, this graphic that you're seeing and that'll bring it, that'll pop it up. So it's almost right there when you see it. Um, but we can move some of that information up a little higher if that's, if, if you wanna see that and make that a little bit more.
It just speaks about why they have, it, it speaks about why those engage, uh, drop-in sessions are happening.
Yeah, absolutely. And we can maybe bifurcate it, so it's not the three paragraphs that's in that about that project. So it's a little more succinct up at the top and then you get, as you scroll down, you get deeper into it. Yeah, we can do that. I'll make a note. Great. Any other questions for, for me or Ben?
Well, I don't have a, a question per se, but I'm happy to see that we're, uh, got this level of development at this point and we're moving forward. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you for the presentation.
Absolutely.
More? No more? We're done? Okay, I'm gonna close, uh, the work session. Let's go home. Mic is off again.